Take a moment to get that, okay. I just want to thank all the land use administrators that have been helping us and the county commissioners from the past meeting for their willingness to listen to our constituents and craft solutions together. We want to also thank all the planning commissioners because we know you're all volunteers and it takes a lot of time and energy to be creative, to create solutions for a healthy community. And we understand that adding comments into tonight's work session is a new format. And so we commend you on adapting to the present needs of our community. So we are all here today because of proposed changes to the Suatch County Land Development Codes. Two public meetings were hosted in Crestone to listen to people's concerns and hear their stories regarding housing sanitation and accessory dwellings. This led to many of us presenting to the county commissioners hearing in December, in which they sent back the proposed changes to the planning commission. In the meantime, we've hosted two solution sessions at Moffett Town Hall to develop a strategy on how we can provide better education and communication to Suatch County residents and work together with the county to create solutions that work for all people regardless of their economic and housing situations. In addition, the Northern Suatch County Library District has hosted two recording sessions to help people tell their housing stories to demonstrate the unique and alternative living environment that brings people to our county to live and build. It's inspiring that we have so many people in this room tonight to offer solutions and new systems to address the county's concerns regarding blight, sanitation, and crime. With no universal building codes, we have some of the most diverse and innovative building practices in the country. No square footage requirements allow people to live simpler, with a smaller carbon footprint, and to be mindful of our resources in building water consumption and heating cooling costs. How can anyone make the decision for another person about what is enough space for them to live a happy and healthy life? We understand the challenges of approving and enforcing appropriate sanitation methods, and that is a major concern in our county. Emergent technologies such as composting toilets, humanure, and incinerating toilets can address many of our water consumption and conservation issues, especially in a drought-ridden county. However, it will take education and outreach to help the people understand the importance and urgency of protecting our groundwaterers, wildlife, and each other if alternative systems remain in place. Instead of restricting practices that are less resource-intensive, let's work together to create models that support more regenerative living. Often, it is a concern for property values and negative stereotypes of working-class and lower-income people that are at the core of land use changes like these that are being proposed. Areas that fail to retain affordable and diverse housing options and put barriers in place become gentrified. This displaces workers, impacts the ability to fill jobs, and ultimately affects our entire economy. We are seeing this happen in many small communities throughout Colorado. Let's create outreach systems that empower and encourage people to live and build that contribute. So we basically want to work together with you.
Suzanne Ru.
Good, thank you very much for being here and for allowing us here. And I want to thank everybody. Thank you all for sitting on this committee and being here this evening and everybody else for showing up and expressing a best interest in these policies. Because I have waited almost 30 years to build my retirement home here. I was drawn by the potential to build a new way of being that reflects sustainable, earth-preserved practices. The Energy Fair was the best place to go in 1993 to learn more about the emerging technologies and sustainable building materials. I moved into an abandoned cannabis grow house and have spent the past few years renovating it. I am so content in my 450-square-foot tiny house. To double that size when building materials are skyrocketing could put my dream of being mortgage-free out of reach. It also makes it challenging to heat and to clean as I age. Fortunately, my barn-raising building costs are lower. I am intending on building a self-sustaining earthship incorporating hempcrete. Recycling waste in a beautiful and useful way, being off-grid and recycling water to grow food are some of the benefits of the earthship model. I am also an advocate for conservation of water and regenerative agriculture. I am interested in composting toilets, and the land I am looking at may not be hospitable for sinking a septic tank. I've been told the waiting list for a septic tank or well is about three years. I will have to do something in the meantime. I am selling my house in Fort Collins this spring and planning to move into an RV while I am building my earthship. I am also planning to put a garage up first in order to store materials and provide a workspace. The proposed changes would have a negative impact on my plans. Let's let tonight be the baseline for discussions and a means of creating community involvement. I'm willing and ready to lend my gifts, time, and talent to find solutions.
So I work in the valley over the past part of the year. And I feel that I personally and many people that I know have lived in square footage under 500 square feet and live comfortably and simply. And also, to build houses out here, it really helps to build something beforehand. And even if you're a landowner and you want to build something before you have a residence, or if you don't even want to have a residence, then the proposed changes would just totally limit that. I think the biggest problem is the sanitation and septic. I feel that it's a huge issue. And working to make that inexpensive for people is very difficult. I realize to make it inexpensive and then also effective is really the goal, but solutions are tough there. So I, part of that, I fear that the county will take the state's perspective on that and just go with the NSF-certified composting toilets, which in some, which may work in some cases, but many of those, if you read reviews of the really cheap ones, which are $1,000 to $5,000, they may be approved by the NSF, but they are actually really ineffective compared to much simpler systems that people can just build by themselves. Or you can go with a really complex system like a Klivvus Multrum, and those are even more expensive than a septic tank. So trying to, to work with a composting toilet and move that forward, but also consider that making that inexpensive and working with people that have experience with it and not just going with what the experts say. Because in many cases, septic tanks can fail too because of owner maintenance on those things. You know, there's no, people need every five to 15 years to empty those septic tanks. And if people aren't doing that, then that causes more public...
Wayne Lockhart.
If possible, I would like to defer to the end of the list and let other people talk. That be all right?
I got out of Home Building because of the regulatory environment. And I think most Americans that have their own business nowadays will tell you that regulatory compliance drives them nuts. Having inspectors come on my job site and literally drive a crew crazy trying to conform with regulation after regulation after regulation. But here's where I stand. If people can't afford 600 square feet and can barely get that project done, if we raise it to 900 square feet, it's going to take them longer to get that done. According to the, according to the American, what is it? Association of American Home Builders, for every $1,000 increase in price, it forces 200,000 Americans out of the market here. Now, with $120 pilot prices of recent and whatnot, are we just going to force more people into cardboard boxes down in the town square like we have in the city? So we're going to, the beauty of Suatch County has always been its affordability. And I think we should really stay away from maybe relating to square foot size. It's, it took me 10 years to build my house, beautiful home, but I had to live in my accessory dwelling first before I could get my house done. If you're an off-grid or you have sensitive electronic equipment, like solar, solar stuff is, where are you going to put it? Out in the wind in the rain? You got to build a shed first. You got to, you got to do that. That's just stupid. Now, when it comes to these composting toilets or whatnot, they're, they're, this is, this is an emergent technology with groundwater problems across the nation. There's a lot of effort coming out with these new kind of whole-house systems, completely dry, compostable, processable, of all your waste into a compost. Don't slam the door on that. I just think that's another really dumb idea. All three of these are really dumb ideas.
Ellen Jones.
Thank you all know kind of my opinion on me, that's it. I look at this again as a people's right to eat. The more government intrusion we have in our damn lives, the less we're going to endure. And this right here is typical government intrusion. You guys have the power to stop that. And now just Google the population of Suatch County. Do you know what population?
6,800.
6,700 people. And we're one of the biggest counties in the state. I'm not, not, not for sure, but I think we're bigger than the state of Rhode Island. We have plenty of room to roam out here. And this, this is just a government intrusion on our private property rights.
Hi, Ray.
One of those jobs I can count on. I try to help businesses stay alive so I do not get beat. I have worked very hard in 14 years to buy and buy in that process now. I cannot afford to pay my land payment, pay my taxes, buy my materials, build my home, and rent a house. So if this goes through, I'm now going to be living in a car that I just, that just broke down, so I can't even move it. That's one point. Two points is, is that in this county and the crime level in this county, there is no way that I'm going to pinch any, buy materials, and leave them open on my property when we have no law enforcement to count on. One of my other things is, is that I do not believe in a septic tank. Where I am and the type of soil that I have, in a number of years, I will have to have a pump repaired, et cetera. But you know what? With composting toilet, I can put indigenous trees on my property to help keep the wind down from blowing me away. I can make sure that I return that compost back to the land and see the natural land come back. I guess what I'm saying is, is that your decision is going to put a lot of us out of a place to live or a hope of our dream. I'm 77 years old. I'm too old to start over again. Please don't take my dream.
Danielle Bitterus.
My husband and I were driving through the Suatch County. The offered lifestyle of a more smaller home that we trust down here. And to see that these changes can be implemented is huge, especially for future generations, and changes like this going to place. It's been proven on many different levels that composting toilets are more efficient in terms of water usage and just the whole closed-loop system, which is what we need to be looking at to ensure that future generations have healthy soil and have a place to live and conserve the watershed. So I think there's a lot of factors that go into play. Education being a huge one that needs to be more accessible for people in terms of how to do a composting toilet safety, how to, you know, know that there's not going to be pathogens that could be dangerous, as many people don't even think about where their waste goes when they flush their convenient toilet that is on grid. So I think educating people and making that more open is huge. And that's something my husband and I, and I'm sure many other people would be willing to help put together as there are a lot of statistics, studies, and proven methods that we can be implementing instead of just abandoning it altogether. So many counties have done when there's other options and forces stand for us to go.
I didn't get my name on there, but you guys can also.
Yeah, we'll hit the left. Anyone that come in after we started wants to speak with, I've got a sign on the list here. We'd like your name on it. James Lowell.
My name is May Folsom. I'm the president of KV Story. And I was appointed on the board a year ago. And as president, I was appointed in June. Haven't been there long. Leave a lot of stuff to deal with. The KV consists of 779 lots, 515 members. Many of the members, landowners, have, live all around the country, somewhere on the world. And Suatch County owns some, and the KV owns some, and that's included in the 515 lots. Minimum square footage in the state of Colorado is 150 square feet. It is my personal opinion that the square foot for each of a person's home is a personal choice. I'm raising the square footage requirement to 900 will deny homeownership to many people. And interior designs, septic system costs $20,000 plus. A vault costs $1,750 plus tax and installation. Big difference. More research needs to be conducted on the use of incinerating toilets and composting toilets here in Suatch County. We have so many people living in Suatch County without proper sanitation. The county is growing and will have a huge influx of people in the coming years. How would you like to drink, bathe, water plants, animals from a well that is constantly having septic waste leach into the ground near it? The need for housing is a huge problem all over the country. Look at, looking at alternative housing, lowering the square footage and alternative sanitation is a must. We live in it. In the greatest country on earth, it's important to help support the, those that are trying to buy, develop, and live on their property. Communication is the first step. And one thing I got to say about the expense of buying a lot, putting in the water, the power, or whatever, you know, you want to do on your property. But I got to say, one thing is how does a person, these people I know that work for the county to make a very low wage, they will never be able to own a home in this county if we change all this stuff. And they can barely buy a place to live now because I deal with them in the KV all the time and other people. Thank you.
Can you say it first?
And from what I've been told, your primary concerns and reasons for changing the codes are the blight and trash on people's properties and inadequate waste management. The proposed changes are not going to solve these problems, even going forward once they're passed. It's only going to make it more economically challenging and make water, alternative water management more difficult. I would love to see solutions to the blight and waste management issues as well. I would love to create solutions to clean up what already exists rather than to regulate people going forward. It's not going to solve the problems. I suspect that in the process of solving our waste management issues for the residents who are currently out of compliance, we will discover and develop creative and environmentally rewarding methods to composting and incinerating toilets and better ways to deal with our waste if we give it an opportunity, rather than shredding it out of the code. I, you know, and I'd rather see improvements to our environment rather than adding more plastic to the ground by septic tanks and leach tanks. I will continue to pursue environmentally conscious solutions and odor-owner builder-focused land use codes. We're facing an uncertain climate future. Where is our water for this winter? There isn't any. And to think that we can just keep flushing our crap down it and not thinking about where it's going and what's happening is not going to be helpful. We have to begin to think differently about how we live and how we build and how we manage our water and our waste and how we help our neighbors rather than just citing them because they're out of compliance rather than helping them get into compliance. Not all of our old ways, septic systems and hiring a builder to build our homes are going to serve us going forward. Please give us more time to present better solutions. Help us with these solutions if you're so inspired. My vision is that we can all live in this very special area in a way that regenerates the land and causes us all to flourish, even with people living in small houses off-grid. Thank you.
Ben, do you can it?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Derek, I'm Brett. Typical market values are raised for homes right now as 250,000 square feet, which equals 180,000 to 316,000 square feet to build. A lot of us owner builders and with material skyrocketing now, we're looking for alternative means for building homes, including sanitation systems, garages for tool material storage, and dwellings while we build. I moved to this county a year and a half ago to build my house. I don't need a 900-square-foot house. I don't want a huge mortgage. That's why I came here. I want to build in my own hands, take my own time, do a good job. But I want the codes to, I want to help create the codes and modify the codes so that we can do this in affordable means. And I'm not alone with this one. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw two, two separate suggestions. First, I would like to consider that one way that you could address the composting is have a situation where all the different designs that are out there could be presented to the land use. And then we could also consider how location and soil is impacting some of those issues for, for composting toilets, incinerating toilets, et cetera, et cetera. And then in getting your application process, because one of the big issues for this toilet situation is that people aren't doing it right, right? Like, so that's kind of part of the problem that you're trying to hit by saying, "Don't have them." So would it be possible then instead to consider having an education model whereby someone says, "I want to put that toilet in," but then they must take some specific courses to know that they're doing it the correct way and that they have a certification sign off and you go, "Okay, we know they're going to do it right" as a way to address sort of misuse, right? Because part of it's, part of it's a cash flow issue, but also part of it is that people, you know, their complex systems sometimes aren't necessarily doing it in the way that they should. So education could be the way to permit the permitting to go forward. The next thing I wanted to bring up and request was that as we're pondering these codes and making sustainable, solution-oriented adjustments, that we think about the codes in total, what they're really designed for. So one, that the codes really express our values as a community, no matter what our economic status is, that we think about these codes not as a divider because of economics, but instead as a unifier to the people who want to live in this area. Number two, that we maintain the history of unique housing in scope and size. That's always been a feature of the San Luis Valley. So if we consider that cabins were very small, people built those themselves, that that is part of our legacy and, you know, holding on to that seems important. Three, that we consider providing assistance when residents are out of compliance. And that the way we ponder getting that assistance is instead of having this concept of exclusively code enforcement, which we don't have an inspector because of money, we instead maybe have underneath the land use committee a panel of three people who are addressing when someone's out of compliance. Why are they out of compliance? Is this a money issue? Is this a, you know, is this a time issue? Is this a hardship issue, like, you know, a death of someone in their, you know, in their family, and that's why they're not moving forward? So that instead of just citing someone, which is the model for, for having an inspector and the money for the inspector, that we instead sort of have a more human approach to go, "What, what's the real issue? Why, why have they been stymied? Why have they fallen off track, right? Why, why are their systems not working?" Number four, that the codes, oh, thanks. Nope, that's good.
Glenn Wall.
Actually, I would like to defer my time to the road itself.
Oh, okay. So then, so then, Wade. And so then, number four would be that the codes really promote emerging technologies, right? So that instead of things that we don't know about, we go back to what we do with the, with the toilet situation and we say, "Okay, we've got all these people who want to do this, whatever this is." Like, we don't even know all the things. Let's say gray water. Then, again, you walk through an educational process to then have the county say, "Yes, you are ready to be able to put that in." So that when new technology comes, the code is actually prepared to address that there's something, we don't even know what it is yet, right? But we have a model about how we can implement it so that it doesn't just kind of run wild. Then, number five is basically, in short, that we're maintaining personal liberty. I think that we can say across, you know, that the code's mode is that, you know, what, what, "Don't tread on me." I think that we can say across, you know, that the codes mode is that, you know, what, what, don't tread on me. I mean, like whatever one's little view is, that ultimately the code is designed to make it so that people can build houses that they want, right? And do it with their own hard work within their means and that they're also not stepping on anyone else. So when, when I looked at the codes, part of the task that I saw was that the commission was trying to address again, this notion of blight, that it was becoming problematic, right? Because then it's now it's starting to affect other people. So can we look at the codes as a way to maintain liberty, but then kind of bring it back so that everyone is getting to do the thing that they wanted? Because I would say that we're in a county that's filled with independent thinkers across all, all forms, right? So hence the reason we're all sort of sitting here. So to me, the big thing I really want to make sure that you're kind of pondering as we do this next round of codes is that an education model that we have designed and we can present stuff to you. It doesn't have to be you going and finding it. All these people know stuff. We could be bringing that forward and then, you know, setting that up and that you sort of certify that you took these educational pieces to then use whatever technology it is so that you know that when you gave that permit, it's not going to go run amok. That's it.
One thing that I have heard. That people have recently want to put these new codes in places is to maintain property values. That's what I've heard, that, that, that all this blight and install houses and all kind of stuff somehow lowers the property values. I kind of see it the other way around. I kind of see that my property values would be reduced if I had these restrictions imposed on me. I've been in this county, I've had, I've been resident in this county for forty years. I started building my house thirty years ago with natural stone and other materials. I couldn't do it. I couldn't have done it if I had a whole bunch of regulations that I had to deal with. I didn't have the money or the, or the time or the knowledge. And so I did it myself, the way that I figured out as best I could. And I'm very grateful to have that opportunity. And I would hate to see that other people wouldn't have that same opportunity. So thank you.
Question of small house living and human beings having a smaller footprint on the earth for years now. And the quality of some of these is just outstanding. And you all know that there are houses that are many, many, many hundreds of square feet that are ranch that immense. So size is not to mention the quality. I would hope that for land use, that would be your focus, is quality of housing, not size. Thank you.
So, thank you, everyone. Um, I just have to say personally, I don't think anything should go to the ground. No chemicals, no, what you would consider from people as waste. And new technology, modern technology has a lot of things that can help break down everything that we produce. But at the same time, everything is created with a purpose, like every animal, every, every life cycle, something is birthed to then kill this and then to take care of that. What we excrete can also take care of itself. But we can come up with compost bins that, well, will be locked so bears can't get in it. And also can be closed off at the bottom, so nothing does leak. So I think that's the only additional thing that I have to say.
Trying to say it really fast. I cut part of it off. People not only value self reliance, but a system of housing and living that benefits everyone and allows everyone the ability to become more self reliant and autonomous. No one wants to be homeless and no one wants anyone else to be homeless. Finding and evicting or displacing anyone from their homes is viewed as a violent act. This shouldn't be wished or forced upon anyone. We had a community action group or committee devoted to aiding citizens without housing, building or code issues and educating each other. There would be no need for punishing people. The next big, big issue that was presented in these talks was our environment. The negative impact on our earth, air, and especially water are extremely important to many of us. Not only should we allow smaller square footage for less energy reliance and less material usage, composting toilets to slow down the dependence on precious drinking water to flush our waste and slow down the pollution of our groundwater and streams and other energy saving practices, we should be encouraging them. The same group I mentioned earlier would be offering education services and even possibly financial incentives to build with the future in mind instead of fearing alternative or more modern practices because they are different than what they have seen going up for years. I propose we create codes that promote safety and ensure there will be support for anyone and everyone concerning shelter and living space. If we must create a minimum square footage, let it align with the state's one hundred and fifty square foot for one individual and one hundred square foot per additional person on the residence. If we must have a code for what you refer to as waste and what I and many others refer to as humanure, let it promote, promote safe ways to use human byproducts by integrating them into the human nutrient cycle and allowing natural thermophilic organisms that are present in them abundance here on earth to do the job they love to do, compost our poop. This is natural and can be done safely and without the burden of having to decide what punishment we are going to create for those who can't afford to use fresh water to send their waste down the line. We must have a code about accessory structures. Please consider how said codes would affect the entire county and everyone in it. This code isn't for one single neighborhood with one type of person and one type of lifestyle. Enforcement of these building codes would, could and does lead to homelessness, more abandoned structures built and partially built, increased mental illness associated with the punishment stigma of being displaced or fined. And displaced is just a nice word that describes one of the most traumatizing and degrading experiences a human can endure. It also leads to problems with physical health and disease, which I believe are some of the reasons cited for creating such codes to begin with. We have many options that include smaller minimum square footage, homes, education, community building projects like tiny home communities and eco villages. Let's be there on the cutting edge of building for our sakes and for the sakes of our children and generations to come.
Want to touch on the ability of microbes. And I think it shouldn't be something that's so easily overlooked. There are so many different. One example is mealworms can actually digest all types of plastic. If they can digest all types of plastic, how is it possible, how is it not possible to do a composting system well with those same microbes? Or with similar microbes? There's just so much we don't know. And to outlaw something just simply based on not knowing whether or not it's going to be effective is, I mean, it's, it's kind of ignorance. I guess the best way to put it. We live in a three hundred and sixty four square foot tiny home, tiny home, massive for us. It works phenomenally well. All of our needs are met. We're extremely happy. We actually started a cafe slash bakery in town. There's no possible way we could have done that without living in our camper. And without paying our dues in our camper. And I feel like that's almost like a rite of passage of being down here is actually like, you know, weathering the storm and not being forced to get something up super quick where you're actually losing all your money. Like, a lot of our money went actually simply to access our property because we were landlocked. So I mean, there's various different things that go into it that impede your ability to even move on to your land. And this would further that. And I don't think that's the most sustainable route. And I think you're going to be pushing a lot of people that are ecocentric out of this area, which is the exact opposite of what we want. We want people that are very ecocentric living here. We want to replenish the watershed. Speaking more on the microbes, if you have microbial life versus dead soil on the top, you're actually replenishing the watershed versus taking away from how much would a septic tank, septic tank destroy the soil microbes on the top of the soil and underneath? And not to mention the water that goes into building the septic. You're extracting all that water when you could actually just be composting and building the watershed itself through Google cultures, also various different practices. Furthermore, the biogas digester bags are something to definitely be educating about. They're very sustainable, very safe. They're all sealed up, nothing leaches. You can actually run dirt bikes, you can run cars, you can run all your home appliances on these things. You can heat your home, you can cook, all of it's super sustainable. It's using our own excrement and just food waste. There's ways to do these sustainable, these things sustainable. And please don't outlaw just because we don't know those, those sustainable ways to do it yet. One comparison I can make is Paul Wheaton doing the rocket mask heater. The rocket mask heater was very frowned upon. It's actually still outlawed in most cases. Now it's completely legal because he proved it was safe. Thank you.
You live north of the K D states, like, I understand. Regulations have nothing to do to correct that. They actually will harm the poor of the county. The majority of this county actually falls, it's a poorer, poorer county than most in Colorado. And we left eighteen hundred square foot house. So it's just my wife and I, we live in a three hundred and twenty square foot temporary home now. And our intent is to build a five hundred square foot cabin to live very simple, want us to spend most of the time outdoors. When we came, we were thinking of using a composting toilet because of the cost. You can spend a thousand dollars and have one that's good and that's reliable, that's efficient, that won't contaminate the grounds. We ended up getting septic, but our first estimate was seventeen thousand dollars. We end up spending ten thousand dollars. Who can spend that? And the other thing is to build, how long does it take to build? If you come out, you have just land and you want to build a homestead. You have all these, this process you have to go through, you need septic, you need permits for all these other things. You need obviously a well and water. So how long should you have to reside in a temporary housing? We left everything. We started over. We came here with nothing but our vehicle and the funds, whatever funds we had. So we're new here. So my, our voice isn't as great as those here. There's many people in the county that have no idea this has even taken place. As I was leaving my property, a guy that's been here for forty years, that lives simple, isn't even aware that this is taking place. The most people in the county aren't aware of the potential damage this can cause them. Most people can't afford, afford it. So, but anyways, that's just our story. But you, you have a room full of people that have been here. And these regulations aren't going to benefit. Limiting how our reach, forcing us to have a nine hundred square footer, larger house does nothing. How would, how would others like it if we told them they couldn't have this size of a house? It infringes on our right to life, liberty and suit of happiness. People should have the choice of what type of house they want to live in, as long as it's not harming the environment. As long as septic or the waste systems aren't going into the ground, as long as we have things that protect that, they're not harming their neighbors. We shouldn't be infringing upon the rights of people. We live in America, it's not China. It's starting to get there. But this is the United States of America. We stand for a free nation. Let's not lose that.
Kevin?
Yep. Prior. Now, this isn't about waste systems. But I wanted to just kind of bring in on the power topic, renewable energy, green planet, reducing the carbon footprint. And scary statistic is three percent of America uses solar power. The scarier part is our country is at eight percent capacity with what's left. But with the growing population, with all the stuff that we're talking about right now, I think that should be taken into consideration. On the, on the topic of what Frank was saying is the funding, is what funding can citizens access? That's. I've talked to senators and congresspeople, county commissioners here in the valley. They told me there's two hundred and fifty eight billion dollars. Well, Frank actually bought a solar system for me, but he didn't get any assistance. So I think when we're talking about a better planet, a greener planet, cleaner, and we're also helping homeowners and property owners save money, I think that should be taken into consideration because there's water treatment, sewage treatment, plants that use solar power that could help reduce the, the costs. And the San Luis Valley is the best place on the planet, in my opinion, for solar power. So. That's it.
Did anyone else want to speak that they're not on? I'll let you steal the list. You take a five minute break. And then we all go into our work session. And you can stay, leave whenever you want to.
Well, don't worry, we're talking. Did you like that?
Did you like that?
Right.
What? Marie wants to make one comment right quick on the left.
So I've spoken with a few of you. Right now, the library in Crestone and Sawatch is starting a podcast called Sawatch County Stories. And every month we'll be recording people's outcomes. So all you have to do is call the library and you can sign up to come and have your personal story reported. Four, five over here. So it's a good spot to share your personal story so that we can capture that for history. And then the work session, it's not exclusively happening here. Yeah, all you have to do is call the library, ask if you can be a part of the podcast and share your story and sign me up, give you all the details. Thanks.
All right. Any comments from?
I think this will be before. You know, everybody that's, that's here that is concerned about the rules and regulations that are being put in place, ready to put in place. There is always a variance. Is this, so if, I'm just throwing this out, I'm not saying it's happening. But let's say we start with the 900 square foot. You can always come in and ask for a variance down to the 250 square foot or whatever you feel appropriate. But we have to put in the regulations certain things that are required by the state. But then the board of county commissioners can make exceptions to those rules. Through their authority. So just because we face, say that composting toilets are not allowable. It's perfectly over. Under the state rules, you can't have composting toilets. You can come in and ask for a variance. Just because some of the rules we may not change, doesn't mean that it's, it's in stone. You can ask for a variance and that's what you need to do. And then these rules are rewritten. Well, I don't know how often.
We only throw them out every year or four times a year.
We restructure them. And we do have a master plan that was worked out several years ago. And we redid some of it, Sawatch County Master Plan. Somebody might want to look at it because it may have been done before. About four years ago, we did it, I think we redid it about four years ago. And it was a real complicated deal. It took three years to do it, the first one. And this was the plans of meetings that was held all over the county, clerks, sergeants, block of Crestone, Villa Grove, Center, La Rida, it was held all over the county. And that was what the people wanted the county to look like. And whatever laws regulations. Because Sawatch County, 20 years ago, was a county with no regulations. And that's why we have a lot of some of the issues that we have up in the north end of the county is because people moved in with no regulations, because of no regulations. So that's what, you know, we brought some of this information on. So I gave you that as a history because myself and Jeff have been involved since the early age. There. So we're like the historians of what's going on. Don't you, don't you think, Jeff, that we've seen the changes come about?
Is that a code book?
No, it's, this is just, this is what the plan and people throughout the county wanted to see, like, they didn't want to see lights, you know, on the side.
It's more of a guide than it is.
So a guide of what they wanted the county to look like or to be.
Is that available online? Is there a way to access that?
I, I can't find it. Do you know where?
It's linked up to the land use.
Okay. Cool.
Okay. Anyone else from the board that can? Amber, where do you want to start? Oh, you, that's right. You got an email from one of our board members that's not here and he sent in an email with comments. Would you read that? Who's state?
It's only says.
Number one on the list is the square footage.
One other question regards to whenever we say square footage, then are we talking about, because we have the tiny homes and stuff, some of these are sitting on wheels. You know, and so are we talking about a structure that is actually attached to the ground? Or are we talking, you know, I think that's what we need to define as to what we're saying the 600, the 900 square foot is, is that a structure that's attached to the ground?
Built on a concrete pad or foundation?
Last sewer and water and all that. But so if it was 250 square feet, they still have to have the water and the sewer be on the ground and not on wheels because that's a mobile home.
60 pages. Our table or on this side.
That's, that's what I'm asking the question.
But a camera is, it's all, that tiny home on wheels is still a camera, it's not a back.
So once you, once you take the wheels, once you take the wheels, that would be considered a option. That would be encouraged.
So, so when we're talking about the square footage, we're talking about something that's attached to the ground with plumbing and sewer. And if it's not, then it's, we consider that an RV or a mobile home. And there, they fall under the different rules. Our residents and residents of non-mobile homes.
That's a structure permanently.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page as far as what the structure we're talking about.
Well, mobile homes, you don't necessarily have to come close.
Well, they fall into, mobile homes are under different rules. And there's no square footage on mobile homes.
Mobile home can also be put on permanent foundation and title.
Well, it can be.
Yes.
When I think of residents, I think of it as definitely the public infrastructure that has. That the residents have. So, yeah. So I mean, if you guys want to change the working of this idea, to add or take away. Yes.
Same bottom, we should address the square footage issue.
I think the first thing, you know, we also need to know where the people were, when we put it in there, you know, they want to do a 250 square foot. The first thing they have to do is put the septic system in. Then that brings up the next issue on the composting. So which, which do we put, in which order? Because the rule is not lawful. Septic, the very first thing the septic plan is a septic.
There's an amount of land, shortage of square footage, where we need to set. Like, you have your septic system requirements are based on the square footage of your town.
And that's the same, I don't know, because like I say, I'm not that familiar with composting toilets. Is a composting toilet based on square footage too, or that people use? I mean, those, those are items that I think we have several people, the audience, that were very knowledgeable in the composting. And I think myself on the board, I'm not knowledgeable in the composting. So I, I'd have to refer to either have somebody come on lecture or someone, the different types of composting are. And so that's the kind of, the law's around now on the composting, around.
Well, they both tie together so much that you change one, you're going to have to change them both somehow.
But potentially you already know, if you follow the states, I don't want to call particularly, but currently we tell you to follow the states of practice regarding your composting, which I believe does have to be the ISO. So that's where my original focus is.
And I want to mention something here, it's an example.
No comment, no comment. For the other, no comment.
So, but does the inspector have to come out and expect the composting will also see that it's in the ground, part of the, and then the composting does perhaps the way.
They shouldn't celebrate waters.
So you'll have to have a plan for gray water systems, composting toilet.
So we need to add to the regulations to wrap that the gray water.
Gray water is going to have to be listed there somehow, how to deal with it.
It's already in the regulation.
And the state code.
So that's what we do is attach that part of the composting, have to make sure that it's attached with the state rules and regulations. Composty toilet is a gray one. Those are expected. Is that, is that one of them?
So is this, this must have come like the, they discussed the differences in the composting. What was with the board? Where, because I know there's major concerns about certain types of problems. From what I've gathered, it's kind of, they are a great office. But when it comes to the word, you, you could mix dirt or anything in it. And it's a lot of weirds. And we know it's the process that it, I guess it's fully built in. And we don't need to worry. So I can't remember, but I'm pretty sure it's a, that you can have that get rid of my desk.
No.
So what I'm talking about, I got my garden, my compost in my garden. This ain't the same type of, I drive, put my veggies and stuff in my, my bear out there.
Doing it right.
It's literally the exact same. And there are also nuance, new age systems that are, are more.
Okay. And that's one, yeah, I should have, I need more knowledge on composting here.
It's also a concern that it does not work for the order.
You can use liquid enzymes that offset that. Doesn't matter how old it is.
It has a small key.
Okay.
And have you?
Okay. Are we going to do?
I was going to say.
Hold on. I had stated that we weren't going to accept more comments from you. I think we've got it backed up here and getting some more information as far as the composting with gray water and so. And just people out here have the expertise and experience to contribute.
Well, maybe I learned, or read one of our Peter workshops or not before we pour that part to the county commissioners, because we can always forward reports to the county commissioner. That's the county commissioner to hold up on the composting toilet until we have more information and then put that part in. Whether it be because of that appearance.
It gets a little weird.
Well, that's, that's the contentious one. I, I see, I don't see the, you know, building excess. Nobody talked about the accessory buildings. I think one person said something about, very little, very, very little said about that. So that's kind of the no brainer.
It's the thing where the building in place needs somewhere to sort of.
Well, and I thought we had discussed that to make that change, that there would be one building allowed for a tool shed. Do you have something on that, Amber?
So what the creditable point is, existing structures are not permitted on all vehicles, unless adapted for children, for instance, worldwide or. For example, projects, workshops should be prepared to outbuild the design, finance, studio or progress, a radio, and/or cost shall not be applied for or permitted by municipal, but for dogs, for residents. A permitted, a permitted residence is completed. Pretty much you just have to have the construction permit for residents, permitted and applied for.
So what you're saying is if they're submitted for a residence permit, then they're able to put a structure on for a tool shed as long as they buy a building permit for it too? Because there is a spot they can do that all on the same application. That like which needs to be changed because that's, that's saying something.
Yeah, because currently you can send no septic to us, whether or not you should put it, unless you're happy to sit. But now this is giving a little bit more lean weight safety, you know, the residents that's, like with it, then they would be allowed.
Maybe I have to set the system in place for our composting, whatever we're used. The storage system, the tenant care system has to go in place as soon as they, they can do any of those other things.
Thank you for that comment.
How long is the permit?
Our, our, they're different teams. And if you're not, it's like six months or I don't know.
It takes five companions to build a residence.
People always get their, I remember the, it's very, it's very, it's hard to talk.
People always get their, I remember, it's very, it's very, it's very. So as long as your experience of your house is still.
Yeah.
We do not have building inspectors.
Amen.
So, can we, so we did address the, accessory buildings, mark that one, or list it as being.
It's just gonna be a thing of wording there, changing the wording on that one.
So we're at that for next, for the round. We all agree on that same thing, and I'm basically, so.
Having, if a, somebody comes in and applies for a permit for a residence, at the same time, we also can apply for their building permit for the one storage shed, go ahead and put it there. As long as it, the permit is bought and paid for.
So there's not a, one before the other.
Right, they'd both be at the same time. But the, the residence permit would still be first, right? And then they, you know, one of the lines, they want to store appliances. Well, that's what the, that's what the addition on the building permit is, Jeff.
That's get a building permit before you can put.
You have a building permit for your house, and then at the same time, you do the building permit for the house, you do the building permit for your shed.
And you put your shed, and you put your, horse can see in there.
Yeah, right, as long as you're not living in it, you know. As long as the buyer has a building permit there.
So, so that one, we're gonna take care of that, that one issue.
Okay, yep.
So, should we address the square footage?
Sure. What do you, so anyone got any thoughts? What, what do you think? You got a thing about the wording, now it too.
Well, I thought, I thought the bottom was nine hundred square feet.
Well, it's a challenge, sort of the nine hundred square feet, it's a state park, it's 720 square. Taking into account, the state requirements, 100 square, 150 square feet per person. I mean, you turn 100 persons, it would be exact, and so I'm thinking 500 minimum. On the foundation permanently, with sanitation.
I would like, if there is a, if there is a requirement from the state on that, I would sure like to see it.
150.
So, what do you think, Jeff?
500 square feet permanently mounted on the foundation, with sanitation.
I think it's an arbitrary, which is probably never sent a year.
And so, I'm actually considering a family of four. So, I'm giving them 6500 square feet, so, no, I'm saying. Instead of 600, go down to 500. Even the person that you were asking about over at your place, his place was 620. So that wouldn't qualify about any problem.
Right, but, that's not the same. We're, we're talking about county line, and various conditions, we're not all living in a developed community, like you're talking. So, it really crosses the line, we're a land development review board. We have nothing to do with, social, social economic or cultural values, really, business of regulatedness. To just pull a number out of the air, like it's some kind of, over made of some, simple. Needs to be based on some, the numbers that you could, state are just starting points, like it, those possibilities. There's a lot of.
That's where I drew my conclusions.
So, let's leave it at that for now, and.
Sanitation kind of, yeah. Some places do, yeah, some places show, everything, so, when you take that into account. That's gonna add into the square footage. So at 500, it really is a fact.
These tiny, 300 feet of cells. Are 350 square feet, 400 square feet, they're all those. They don't have to add on, have a bathroom, or things like that.
I think what we're trying to keep though, or, or should anything, somebody else's, but, as far as, wasn't it, because there's somebody who needed new storage units? And not realizing that they needed restaurants, and so I think, I think, I think, the, the, but I think the garbage does need to be there, so that they can see, that they do have to.
That was our starting point, you know, to. See, seeing that we're, we're, our house, a few people, was 320, a house, 100.
And I wasn't talking about the square, I was talking about the 300.
So, there was a way, I, I really liked what I heard tonight on the education side, that. Somehow you are checked out on, getting, educated on necessities of building and dwelling, or providing a compost system, or. Various matters that we're planning to be pushing, it is, to just have a blanket approach to, like, you just can't have a composting toilet, because a few people are not doing right, is. Not applicable in this day and time, we, we have emerging technologies that are, they can make these things work correctly, we have education systems that can help people understand how best to use them. And that's, that's really what we need to do, we need to work with people, and then.
We have some people here who, maybe that's one thing we need to look at, is bringing some of the outside sources in here that want to provide educational services, but it, wouldn't be. Would someone be part of the land use, or would it be a mandated, land use, that, that, is it, around the programs, and things like that, we could. Possibly, use that source if they're willing to, do it, their, their education, can't be the land use. Planning commission, land use office, that should be educating all the people, not, we're in the regulation business, not the education, sorry, that's what it comes down to.
I can say that we need to learn.
Yeah, the education. So, we need to have, somebody on the outside source that would be willing to provide that service, and it'd be just an additional referral point from the land use.
And we could have like little, mini, mini sessions, that somebody comes in and we spend time figuring it out. You know, we did similar with the cannabis industry, but it was like application by application, we learned more every time, and. I think we're very well educated in the cannabis industry, by way of that process, and we, 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 we amended our rules, including in this round, the lighting, all the updates, by the. Your education, through experience. And, none of us seem to know entirely about each of these subjects, so we, we do need to bring in outside sources, you know.
So, in my thoughts of that, I'm fine with outside sources coming in, but, I don't feel. That needs to be a person that has just sat in front of a computer and learned a lot and read a lot there, I think it needs to be someone that has some actual education, expertise, and not just somebody. You're off the street, that comes in to do that.
I think we can find people like that, people from the industry.
Well, in front of the industry of builders and designers and so forth, of that stuff, that's what I'm having. Okay.
There's a lot that are office, and, most people, that are building. In areas, they're just wanting to build, like, have a shed on their property, and their kids live there, for us to drag around and see that, it's hard. For them to just live in a tough shed, and, no septic, no, water, and, so I mean, it's not just for them to try and get rid of it, it's not where, it's hard, and hard, you want to regulate, get some service people. You know, and, then the other issue is about, these people, and there's, even, it's just, it's not even, uh, people know, but, they also have a huge greenhouse. And, it's, it's, it's just hard for us to see, you know, and, and you can drive. That way, you can drive around, and you see it everywhere, so, it's not, it's the bad apples, classes, are a lot of weird.
I'm now opposed to alternative sanitation, but, once we approve that, who's gonna go out and inspect it, who's gonna go and see every year if we maintain properly? And when the property is sold, who's gonna educate the new home? Which is, those are other, those are other things that I, I just have the, so the inspector's duties, including, we don't have septic inspectors.
But all he inspects is installation.
That's right. I'm thinking that, that is not gonna be, it's kind of elusive enough, what to do, to do the alternative, at this point. I think we need more education, as far as all of these.
Okay. So then, as far as figuring square footage and septic, are we gonna let that set for the night, without a decision?
I don't think we should let it set, because sanitation, regardless of what other size it's gonna be, the sanitation has to be there.
There has to be something for sanitation.
And the square footage, we just need to determine, what authority, if the state's 150 square foot is the, is a requirement of the state, then, that should be our requirement, again. How do you determine how many people, unfortunately, we have from past history, we have people come and tell you they're gonna have one person in the house.
A year later, there's five.
There's that many in there, so, we need to set a minimum. But I mean, well, I can say the household maintain, I'm just throwing this out, every household maintains two, you know, or, whatever the census says, there's. In Suawatch County, it's an average of 2.4 people per household in Suawatch County, then that's. Be done, but again, like I said, they can ask for the variances, so if we say 500 feet, 600, we can always ask for the variance, and I'm here all by myself.
One thing, we just let there are variance fees, so it's expensive to apply for that.
No, it isn't that one, it should be, they're asking for, variance in our regulations. Someone come, come down from the state.
I was just gonna say, I don't know, this last time, last, last meeting, or the meeting before, when a gentleman came in, expecting this year, we're getting a similar, or something, because he was told he could not go out with a chico. That's what we're trying to, have done, and so, it's a big, it's a whole part, really. And, it's not sanitary, it's not good for the labor, you know, and how many people are selling outside in a five gallon bucket next to, I mean, we have all sorts of complaints.
Trying to start, yeah, so, we're running over these buckets, in many ways, and, not.
And so, so, so that's what we're trying to, you know, we're trying to help everyone in that, that situation, because, you know, at some point, I wonder what we're gonna have.
So what, what are you gonna just want to do with the square footage innocent? Do you wanna try to find more information, it kind of looks to me like that's where we're headed.
About the composting trust separation, right, because that would be part of the sanitation, but, but the sanitation is a must, whatever size the house is.
Right.
Yes, and that's the first thing, again, building permit is put the sanitation, regardless of the size. So, do you feel comfortable to have, if the state says 150 per, and then we say that amount of. Two, let's put it down.
Your approach there, based on the assessments, averages, and, whatever, we always take our lead from the state, right? And we bring it on down to our, our level, and amend or add to or set as presented, and. If we're gonna do another session, are we gonna do another workshop?
It's on the agenda, it's on the board, for our next meeting to think some action.
Because the education needs to happen before we.
The board of county committees, we say, we have to have this back. We're taking the points out, or the only other parts, we submitted, ever.
There's other items that we submitted to the question, it's like, that stuff was, the kennels, and the red, what, animal refuge, and the, and the.
That stuff was, these are the only things that come back to.
Yeah, there was a sense of things that went on, and were true, these were ones that were picked up. So the process functions.
So then, do we need to say, that, take all this under advisement, and do some more additional homework?
We're not under a time limit, I would think, I would think so.
We can't, we can't make any motions during this time anyhow, we just have to have a consensus. If everybody else had a consensus, I would say, you know, we already have some starting points on the square footage, and the accessible buildings, we didn't address the. Bathroom, that should be just, whatever the rules, whatever the picture, and find it back in years. No problem for one year.
Okay, so then we can't make any more decisions, until we have our. Until we have our next meeting. And are you thinking we're headed for a work session out of our next meeting?
I would say we solicit help on the education. Reach out. People who know. Who should help to who should learn from. Based our next work session on that.
Okay. Who?
Or is that the inspector?
If it's what the next meeting, if it can. If not, then we'll set up another meeting with him when he came.
Maybe for a few hours or maybe after two weeks.
Yes.
And maybe what I feel is for the public. People here tonight, but maybe somewhere around there is such a thing as a certified. Person. Compost department. We have somebody. Well, I mean, then that person you're trying to educate is on them because. I'm serious. Inspector just. Review.
But uh. I just wondered if you would be willing for your work sessions, do you let some people present stuff that they gave to you in advance? To take a look at so. Like a proposal so that that way. You don't even like we could say, oh, here's some people and then you could decide are these people you wanna hear from?
You actually have to get your system approved by the state and then they will allow us to appeal.
Yeah, but what I was talking about was education. So you're talking about your working game. Is it possible to submit a proposal to present some education on these topics for your next work meeting is the question.
Can you do that, Marty?
Yeah, that's it would be a proposal you'd write it up and we would submit it to the to the office and then.
We could we could look at it. Well, yeah, I think it will have to be. Like I said, it'll have to be somebody that's state certified or. You know, that's. In the development business or building business or something.
The state experts, I can. Who's trying to be exact. People out here wants to put in a. That type of system has to be certified by the state and so pass papers. There are many outstanding certified, then Mr. Faly would go. Tell them, okay, you've installed a proper area.
So then.
Put a certified drone on there and say that's there. All right.
So.
Now serves state members.
So then. What I'm given is. If there's surely somebody in the state office, health department office. That knows. That knows about this. Then you contact them and see if they. Ask them, see if they will show up or. Do an online presentation or something. And we'll do it. Are you is the board in agreement with that? Okay, anything else? Yes.
It says that the structure is moved, it must be moved to Sawatch County.
I think it should be.
Right, but there is one, there is one municipality that does not have an H required. So I mean. I don't know if you wanna. This unless there's an accepting municipality in the. Where. It's number three.
Great, your question on whether municipality that's incorporated itself rule. Is uh, subject to county.
Well, my my. My question is, is the way it states that it has to be. So it can be.
Number here, number three. That's important.
Well, but. But what I'm saying is instead of limiting it to the county, there is need of this authority. That is willing to accept it. That's all I'm asking. Like the town of Swatch and so.
Well. Yeah.
I would imagine that there. An area after.
Can lift them up.
Yes.
I would need to say. Because of this. Mom that can't. That. I guess I guess. Well, then.
I can be defensive.
Right, it. I'm just thinking that maybe it needs a little different wording as far as. Because there is a municipality that's accepting or. But I I just think it would be good.